All right, well, we've got to make, it's two minutes after, we'll go ahead and get started then. I'm calling to order the Tuesday, May 19th, 2020 Ione City Council meeting. If everybody could please stand and say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the flag.
And to the republic for which it stands.
Which it stands.
One nation.
One nation, under God, indivisible.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice.
With liberty and justice for all. Uh, Janice, do you want to do the roll call?
Sure. Councilmember Reed?
Here.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Here.
Councilmember Epperson? Councilmember Epperson? Is Dan, does Dan here?
He was here.
He was?
Okay, well.
Councilmember Atlin, councilmember Atlin?
Nope.
Nope, Mayor Ratten?
I'm here.
Councilmember Epperson? Doesn't sound like he's here, Diana.
Hmm, he was there a minute ago, he, he announced himself and muted.
And muted?
Yeah.
All right.
And clearly muted really well.
Well, we can move forward because we do have three, three members.
All right, well, if, if Dan or Dominic come in later, we'll duly note it for the record. Uh, we have a change in the agenda. There is no consent calendar, the minutes were not completed in time for this meeting. Uh, so we are removing the consent calendar. Can I, I get an approval of the agenda?
We approve the agenda with the exception of the consent calendar.
Dan, is that you? I, thank you, Stacy, we have a first and a second. And Dan, did I hear you come back on? It's not. Uh, okay, is that we're gonna do a roll call of for?
We need, we need a vote on that motion.
Yes, we do. Uh, councilmember Atlin is not present, councilmember Epperson is not present, councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Aye.
Councilmember Ratten, aye. The agenda is approved, moving on. We have no public hearings, moving to the regular agenda. We have the adoption of resolution number 2020-11, approving the 2019, yes.
I apologize, this is Sophie, do we take public comment?
Oh, yes, sorry, we do, thank you. At this point, I will open it up for public comments. This is for comments for anything that is not on the current agenda. Please limit yourselves to a four minutes. Is there anyone who would like to make a comment?
Hi, this is Dan, sorry, my phone locked up on me, I'm here.
Okay. Hearing none, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment and move on to the regular agenda. We have, uh, item number two, adoption of resolution number 2020-11, approving the 2019 general plan annual progress report, and direct staff to submit the report to the HCD and OPR, oh, yeah, OPR. Staff report.
Hello, this is April Wooden, thank you very much, Mayor Ratten. This is a report that is required by the state to be submitted to those two departments, uh, giving the state an update on where the city stands on completion of action items in its general plan. Um, in the past, there hasn't been really any stick for not submitting it, and as you can tell from the attachment, it's a lot of work and staff time, but they are now, um, kind of bringing the hammer down, so we wanted to make sure that we, um, completed this requirement that the state has set for us. So, first of all, I'd really like to thank the other city staff who assisted in the preparation of this report, including the city manager, the city engineer, Todd in Public Works, um, Mark and Curtis in Building, and Chief Mackey and, and Chief Busby for their help in completing this report. Um, the plan contains policies and programs that are intended to move the city further along in its goals of, um, of what it sees as its vision in the general plan. And so, this report identifies each action item that's found in the general plan, and then gives a brief response for where the city stands on completing those items. As you can see, many have been completed in prior years. Some are simply things that we don't have the staff or the financial resources to tackle. Um, others have become irrelevant, for example, uh, anything related to redevelopment. So, um, I would simply say that, uh, it, it's a, it's a good document to show us where we're at and what we still would like to accomplish, and since our hope is to update both our general plan and the zoning code, um, over the next 12 months, this gives us a good, uh, jumping off point to take a look at some of these things and see if they're still relevant and things that the council would like staff to continue working on. Um, with that, I, I would simply open it up and ask if the council has any questions on anything that's in the report, and otherwise ask that you approve the resolution, accepting it and placing it on file, and I will then forward this document to those two state departments.
Thank you very much. Uh, April, can you tell me what, uh, HCD and OPR stand for?
Yes, HCD is the Housing and Community Development Department, uh, of the state, so that's who oversees anything related to housing, who provides, um, grants for housing work, um, who takes care of our allocation each cycle for our regional housing needs allocation that, um, each jurisdiction in the state is required to meet and plan for in their housing element. And then the Office of Planning and Research is supposed to be, um, kind of a technical assistance arm of the state, so that, um, that you can reach out to them if you have questions about the good way to address something in your land use element or, um, or things like that. They, they occasionally prepare white papers on things that they've done research and, and try to provide it to localities, so they keep, they, along with HCD, keep track of whether cities are, um, making any progress on the things that they include in their general plan.
Thank you very much. Uh, is there any council, council questions, council discussions? Uh, hearing none, I'll go ahead and open it, oh, did you get, is that?
I'm sorry, I, I thought somebody was saying something, it sounded like, there's somewhere distorted voice. I just want to ask, April, um, is there anything you'd like to highlight? I know one big thing probably would be, uh, the fire department going to their, uh, level one, and then what are the two biggest things we're facing next year, in your opinion?
Um, well, for, for next year, I'll start with that question first. It really is just updating our general plan, things that have been accomplished we need to drop off of our list, and, um, frankly, uh, in working on this, I think that it kind of got down in the weeds on some things. I think that it can be tightened up and, uh, become a much more useful document as we, as we update it next year. And then, um, yes, definitely the fire department, and even though it's being finalized this year, working on the local hazard mitigation plans last year was definitely addressing something that the general plan is, uh, concerned with because we do have our health and safety element, so it's always good to make sure that anything related to hazard goes updated on a regular basis.
Very good, thank you. And, and one question, sorry, we're quick, stay sorry, um, one quick thing on the general plan, is that, review that to be a, uh, like a collaborative process like it was when we first did it, probably 12 years ago? Or will this be something that will be in-house with staff?
Yes, that's, that's our, that's our plan, to do it in-house and to make it as collaborative as possible. I, I, I just feel that we can create a general plan that's, that still includes everything that's important to the city, but we can just tighten it up and make it a little bit easier read for the public.
Very good, thank you.
Sure.
Any other public, any other staff or, um, council comments? Okay, I'll go ahead and open it up to public comments. Okay, hearing none, I'm gonna go ahead and close public comment. Any other further council discussion? Um, April, the, when you said that you're gonna do this in-house, you, we, will we be having any kind of, um, public meetings where the public will actually be able to interact and review these documents like we did previously with, with this document?
Absolutely, Mayor, um, it, it will be collaborative, not just among staff, but with, with the whole community. Um, you know, our, our budget's going to be tight, so we'll, at this point, we're, we're trying to keep that down to maybe two community meetings and then, uh, meetings with Planning Commission and the council. But, uh, absolutely, we will, and we'll, we'll do outreach through things like the city's newsletter and, and try to get the community involved and, and aware that the process is going forward.
Okay, great.
I'm actually working on the, the work program, trying to get down in the actual details of what's gonna happen month by month, and as soon as that's, um, available, we'll, we'll, we'll make that available to Planning Commission and council.
Okay, great, I was gonna ask you if you had a, um, a general idea or an outline or, um, some kind of a plan for how that was gonna, fantastic. And any, any other council questions? I will then go ahead and entertain a...
Motion? This is Reed.
Go ahead.
One at a time?
I'm gonna make a motion that would be passed, resolution 2020-11.
Reed seconds.
We have a first and a second, we'll go ahead and take the voice. Uh, all those in favor, certainly, Atlin's not here, uh, Epperson?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Rhodes?
Aye.
Ratten is, uh, yes, as well, uh, resolution is passed. Thank you very much. And, moving on, two, city manager report.
Yes, Mayor, council, I have a few things on the, the, uh, agenda to read, report on. Uh, Lori McGraw, are you on?
This is Reed, can I interrupt for just a moment?
Sure.
You may.
Um, we, the motion was for resolution 2020-11, there's also a 2020-06, what is, does that mean, action as well?
No, that's just a copy of the resolution that the Planning Commission passed.
Oh, okay, yeah, I, I was confused by the names at the bottom, but I just wanted to make sure, thanks.
Oh, did we goof something up? Um, on the agenda, it's, it's just listed as the adoption of resolution 2020-11, but I think on the actual document, it may say that.
I don't know if we pick away.
Um, okay, so, city manager report, John?
Okay, uh, Lori McGraw, are you on?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes. I have Lori McGraw giving it, I'm sorry, I'll just introduce you quick here, Lori. I have Lori McGraw kind of giving council an update as to the software conversion and the finance update. Go ahead, Lori.
Good evening, um, this is Lori McGraw. Um, uh, the city manager has asked me to provide counsel with, uh, financial update tonight that outlines, uh, some of the relevant conditions that are affecting the city of Ione, um, as we, uh, open back up following the governor's orders. Um, I'm working from home on the budget right now, our software is coming along, we're doing, uh, the utility billings are coming out of Cessell software, as are the accounts payable, accounts receivable. The community development, um, module has not been implemented at this point. Business license has been implemented, and many of the tools. I'm sorry, was there, did somebody say something?
No, I think somebody needs to mute, everybody needs to mute their phones.
Okay, I will continue. Um, so we are moving along on that, uh, I've had several meetings with, uh, Cessell during this time that I've been out of the office, so we continue moving along on the implementation. But I did want to give a little bit of, uh, update on the city's revenue stream at this time due to the COVID-19 implications. The biggest impact that I believe will be felt by the city will be a reduction in sales tax received, along with a delay in receiving those sales tax revenues that are collected. Uh, at the beginning of April, the Governor Newsom approved a release to small businesses within California that have less than $5 million in taxable sales. Within that release, he, um, extended payments of up to $50,000 in sales tax liability for businesses interest-free for up to a 12-month extension. So in turn, that's going to slow that sales tax revenue down from coming into the city, so it will definitely affect the city's, um, cash flow. Normally, there's a two-month turnaround from the time the consumer makes a purchase, that business submits their sales tax liability to the state of California, and in turn, the state of California releases the 1% share of the sales tax revenue back to local government. So, from that two-month turnaround, we're now going to see an a, an extended 12 months, um, on receiving that, the sales tax. They're not forgiving it, it just will be a delay, which will affect, of course, it will affect the city's cash flow because that money will not be coming in within two months, but it will be deferred up to a year. Um, along with that, with the sales tax, I believe that we're also gonna see some tax revenue from the businesses, uh, decline because of businesses that, uh, had to be closed during this emergency order, as well as some businesses who will potentially close their doors for good, and that will re, uh, reduce the sales tax that is coming in. So, as of right now, I, I'm projecting around a 10% to 15% decline in the city's sales tax over last year's, um, projection. Uh, the city's major source of revenue is derived from property tax, and at this time, there has been no extensions offered for those payments. The city is also in a unique situation because there's continued development within the city limits, so those revenue streams should continue to come into the city with us only realizing minimal decreases because of those additional houses that are coming in, the additional development within the city limits. We are surely going to see, um, homeowners that are unable to pay their property tax on time because they've either been temporary, temporarily or permanently, um, unemployed during this time. But I think that that will be offset by the fact that we have additional revenue that will be coming in due to the new construction. So I, I believe that our, our major source of revenue will be static from this year to next year. I see little change there, may, it may be delayed a little with people falling behind until they can get back up on their feet and get their taxes paid, so we may see a little, some of the revenue deferred as well, but for the most part, I think that that's going to stay static. Um, in, uh, other cities, there's been a lot of issues with the TOT tax, which we're in a better position than most cities are because we have basically no TOT revenue, very, very minor TOT. There are some cities that 50% of their revenue stream is based on that TOT revenue. Have that, didn't have it before, we don't have it now, so we're, that really isn't gonna affect us much. Um, within the road tax fund, we'll definitely realize a decrease in revenue, uh, because of the shelter and order place, uh, and as well as many employers implementing, um, employees to, uh, work remotely from home. The revenue for the RMRA and SB1 money and HUTA money is all based on, um, allocations based on gallons of fuel purchased at the pump. So with that reduction, we've definitely seen a, um, lower cost for our fuel right now, but those taxes are based on the gallons, not the price. So, based on the reduction in the gallons that have been used recently, we will, I'm projecting right now from projections that, um, other communities, uh, are looking at probably between 10 and 30% decrease in the highway user tax revenue that we normally receive. And the state of California normally sends out an updated projection in May. I just checked again shortly before this meeting started, and the last updated projection was done in January, so it's definitely, um, outdated at this time because of everything that's happened since January. So, we'll have to wait on further information on that, so we, we know where we're going, um, on that. Um, our investments are all currently held in conservative funds, so while we're not receiving a lot of interest, that money is safe, and we continue to receive minimal investment on that money, but it is completely safe. We haven't lost any money, nothing is held in, um, uh, the stock market or anything like that where we could be losing money, everything's in CDs, money markets, savings accounts is all held safely. Uh, I've been on several conference calls with, uh, GFOA to see what other cities in the area are doing, a different revenue, um, ideas that they are having of how to save, how to save on expenses, how to try to generate more revenue, different grants that are available, so I've been taking place in those, um, webinars while I've been at home, and, um, can, I just continue, uh, trying to get everything done that I possibly can from here. It's actually worked out much smoother than I anticipated. We had a lot of the infrastructure for the, um, laptop and, uh, being able to get onto our software and all of that setup, so it, it has gone fairly smoothly. So, I, I think I've pretty much covered everything, I just kind of wanted, uh, council to know what's going on in other jurisdictions and what we, what we think we have to look forward to, but as time goes on, that, that'll definitely change and have to be updated.
All right, thanks Lori. Um, continuing with city manager report, Amador County, in terms of the COVID, the state approved our variant assessment, um, so we are beginning to open up, we are in stage two. There's a lot of questions, there's a lot of confusion, and there are, um, many companies, many businesses that are sitting there going, okay, we're, we're not on the list to open up, but we probably might open up anyway. Um, I, I know that, again, that, that is a big concern. Um, I will say that, you know, the city of Ione is not going to be, uh, doing any type of enforcement. We, we will, we'll talk about education, we'll talk about the things, uh, that need to be done in order for, you know, to, to keep customers safe and everything, but we, we are not going to do enforcement. Um, hopefully, you know, as we continue to, to move forward with, with, with progress, uh, we'll be able to open up, uh, sooner and sooner. I know one of the questions I keep getting is, what are my thoughts about the swimming pool opening up this summer? Um, and as, as I told people, you know, I'm hoping that it might be able to open up in, in July, um, but that will be the, the states and the counties' ultimate decision, the health department's decision. I know Accra is in the process of looking for lifeguards, um, so again, we, we, we keep trying, trying to work on that front to, to try to get back as normal a, as soon as possible. Um, the CDGB funding for emergency loan to businesses, I am working with the Housing and Community Development Department to get the funds, uh, that we have, the 97,000, that was a part of our application back in 1997, uh, related to housing rehabilitation, and getting that switched over to economic development. Do you think that would be an easy process? Um, it's not, I've been beating my head against the wall, uh, working with people. Um, I've laid out, you know, the application process that, that we want to use. I've, I've, I've answered, you know, their questions in terms of how, how we're looking at all, all this, uh, from, from a loan standpoint, what, what businesses can do with it, how, you know, the retention of jobs. Um, but like I said, getting that, that, that approval from Housing and Community Development, especially the block grant provision of that, right, right now, it's, I, I think everybody's kind of stymied. The people that I'm working with are sheltered in place at home too, so, you know, you call the office, you leave a message, they, they, they call you back, um, you know, the... You know, and again, everybody that I've talked to says the concept is good in terms of using those dollars for business loans, we've just got to get the right approval process. And like I said, it's taking a little bit longer than I think it should, but we're plugging along.
John, can I ask you a question on that?
Sure.
The city of Plymouth actually did issue these payments out, some payments out for the same purpose, and it wasn't clear in the news report what funds they actually used other than they said they were some kind of a block grant.
They were block grants, and I'm not exactly certain either. Now, when communities apply for the block grant programs, they kind of designate what type of activities that they want to do, and they can be a mix of them. Their program could have very well been related to business development. If that's indeed the case, then they don't have an issue, because ours was focused on housing rehabilitation. We have to go through that process. The other thing in terms of talking to Housing and Community Development is they want to make sure that all those dollars are revenue dollars, meaning that those are dollars that the interest came back from loans that we made in the past. If it's not, then the situation gets complicated. Right now, I'm kind of looking into that as well. I know back in 1997, the city was awarded $400,000 for the housing rehabilitation program. I'm pretty certain that those are the funds that we're talking about. But again, in terms of identifying whether or not those are program revenue or those are monies that we didn't disperse out, I have to identify that for the state. So again, we, like I said, the block grant program in Plymouth, their program may have been different from ours. Economic Development, Housing is all tied into the Department of Housing and Community Development. Like I said, our block grant program was specifically geared towards housing rehabilitation, and that's where I'm running into the snag.
Okay. I also want to note that Dominic Atlin was actually on the call. He came in at 6:20.
Hey. I'm here.
Okay. PG&E, the Public Service Power Shutoffs, I've been talking with them. They want to use Evelyn Bishop Hall as a site in case of a public power shutoff. They have talked about supplying a generator for the facility. I'm meeting with them tomorrow to look at the electrical panels and to tour the facility with them. One of the interesting things in their proposal and concept was, you know, they will put in a generator in June, but they want to take it out in December. So I have some issues with that. The other thing that I'm also finding out, and I haven't seen the agreement that PG&E is proposing on this, but there are some terms that are just not favorable to the city at all. I talked with other communities who were dealing with PG&E on this, and one community just flat simply said, no, we're not going to follow through with their proposal, because one of the things was, you know, if there was a public power shutoff, PG&E in terms of their agreement says, you know, they have full control of the building, and then they can decide, you know, to cancel other people's events if it's still there. Like I said, I haven't seen that in writing, they haven't provided me anything, but it is something that we'll look at very closely. So again, like I said, I'm meeting with them tomorrow. I should have a little bit more update in terms of what their proposal is, what type of information, what type of agreement that they're proposing at our next council meeting. Solar fields are, I'm sorry, was there a question? Nope, okay. Solar fields are continually to move forward. I believe the electrical panels at the Courpiard Church Plant is going to be updated here beginning of June. So again, progress is slowly moving forward on that, but it is moving forward. June 2nd council meeting, we will be having that in the council chambers. I have a camera for the go-to meeting. I am working to make sure that we can use that. We have council people here, we'll encourage the audience to still call in, and we'll be conducting our meetings that way from now on until the restriction on meetings and the social distancing is being removed. So like I said, plan on being at City Hall for a council meeting on June 2nd. Also, we talked about a goal-setting session on June 6th, which is a Saturday. I'm going to propose 9:00 AM to noon, 1 o'clock, and we will, again, look at the goals that we've established, see where we're at, and what changes that council wants to make in terms of direction for moving forward.
Hey, John, this is Stacy. Can I interrupt you for a second?
Sure.
Back up to the solar field update, there's rumors going around. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Back to the solar field update, there's rumors going around that that company is going bankrupt. Can you clarify that that's not true?
I have not heard that. I'll have to check that. Okay. Sorry, everything's dead. Stacy, did you hear me?
Yes, I did. Thank you, John.
Okay, all right, yep. I'll have that at our next council meeting. That is all I have.
John, this is Sophie.
Yes.
With regards to the June 6th goal-setting session, I cannot be there in person at that date and time, but I can make arrangements to call in if you want me on the phone.
That'll work.
Okay. So just, or I can set up a Zoom, and you can have one camera there on a laptop, and I can see everybody and interact that way.
Like I said, again, there's a go-to meeting, so you might be able to tie in that way too.
Okay.
Are you in the office tomorrow? We can talk about the options for that.
I am not, but you can reach me on my cell phone.
Okay, okay, yeah. Like I said, we've got to be careful about having more than 10 people in, in the social distancing, so like I said, you calling in, that probably works well.
And I wanted to clarify for the June 2nd meeting, just for everybody's knowledge, my understanding is that the council will be the only ones in chambers along with essential staff. Everyone else is going to be required to call into the meeting, because we cannot create social distancing in there for more than the council and essential staff.
Correct.
Thank you.
That is all I had.
Any council committee reports?
Dan here, just at.
I'm sorry, Dan, you're breaking up.
I can.
Okay, we're getting every other word, Dan. Okay, that's better, now we can hear you.
Okay, that's okay. So real quick, so ACR, what's that? I'll talk slow. ACR is basically shuttered right now, and they are just doing park maintenance and a few other activities. We have not had any meetings. I believe Janice may have an email. If she does, I can forward it if anybody's interested. Thank you, that's all.
Hi, Dominic here. We had the ACTC meeting. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. So the main thing out of ACTC was the intersection at 104 and 88. Caltrans did a study. It's been fast-tracked and everything, but there's no near the date to do anything. So what I asked in the meantime is if they would at least put a speed reduction there, right around 45 miles an hour between 124 and, what is that, east of 104, just to keep the speeds down until they get their project off the ground. I can forward you the, what the project, the response from Caltrans, but basically, you know, Caltrans, they're like everyone else, they don't do anything unless there's a bunch of accidents, and there hasn't been any, but myself and Richard Forster are trying to push something to be done there sooner than the three- to five-year window, is what Caltrans is saying. That's all I have.
This is Tom. I was supposed to have an airboard meeting today, but we got bumped by another group up at the county office, so won't be meeting till tomorrow. That's the only one I had going this time.
This is Stacy Rhodes. I had no committee reports.
I, this is Diane Rotten. I met the opening Amador County Steering Committee met today, and we are progressing quickly through stage two at this point. We may be actually opening up, assuming the state will allow, to stage three in possibly two to three weeks. We do have to submit a containment plan. The county health officer, Dr. Kerr, has it about 70, 80% complete with the information that she knows right now. There is going to be some additional criteria that the state is going to add, that once they get that, that they will, you know, hit the ground running and get that part of the plan committed, completed, and then submitted to the state, so that we can move into a stage three opening as quickly as possible. There is, again, they're talking about a potential June 8th reopening for some of the facilities if we can in fact meet that stage three requirement. The casinos are actually not required to adhere to any of our standards, the state standards. Apparently, there's been several meetings with the tribes, as well as the governor's office, and the tribes are cognizant of the need for, you know, maintaining healthy distances, opening appropriately. They've got their own standards that they have also submitted to the governor's office. Some of them are down south in the San Diego area, are talking about opening now, as soon as next week. From what I gathered in the discussion today, the casinos here are more inclined to look at a date after Memorial Day. They do not want to have a big draw of people, that is not their goal, to bring in thousands of people into the county and bring them into their casinos at this point. So they're talking about, you know, looking towards the June 8th level three, stage three released as well. The farmers' markets in the area are also looking, would be allowed to reopen possibly in early June. Lodging is looking more into a late-stage three, so the sooner we get to stage three, the sooner those can actually reopen. And, let's see, camping recreation, those are not, we don't have any standardized guidance from the state on those yet. They are a, unless, right now, it's open for only essential workers to stay in both hotels and campgrounds, but we're looking for some guidance from the state as far as bringing those online as well in early stage, late-stage two, or very early in stage three. And that was, farmers' markets, yep, that's it, that's all I have. Oh, yes, and again, along John's lines, the county is actually not looking at enforcement. They are continuing in the mode of education. So, you know, they have a lot of people, they're getting a lot of phone calls of people saying, well, so-and-so's doing this. They are actually working with the businesses to educate them on what the proper, what they can do, what they're doing right, what they need to add, those kinds of things. If anybody comes to any of you and says, you know, I want to reopen, how am I going to do this, absolutely refer them to the Amador County Health Officer's webpage. There's a bunch of great information in there on what they need to do, how they could do it, what their distances are, what their social responsibilities are to the public as well as their employees. So there's also the ability for them to print signage for their windows, showing that, yes, they have, they are meeting these standards, you know, what their requirements are, do they ask for masks, do they not ask for masks, you know, what can they touch, what can't they touch, those kinds of things. So if anybody asks you, absolutely refer them to the website, and there's all kinds of great information in there. And that's all I have. So, any council comments or future agenda items you want us to review?
This is Dominic. Nothing from me at this time.
This is Stacy. I have a couple of items. One is, can you hear me okay, Mayor?
Yes.
Okay. The first one is, some of you may or may not know that Amador County has filed a lawsuit against CDCR in violation of the Clean Water Act. They did this on May 15th, and you could probably go, I've got it on my computer, I can send it to you guys if you want it. I got the full lawsuit, but I think you can go with the county and they'll give it to you. But along with that, for the last four or five months, I've been working directly with the federal EPA, and I've worked my way down from actually the White House down to the actual enforcement and compliance inspector that will be coming to Ione as soon as the coronavirus is over. Some of these people, real quick, just so you knew who I've been dealing with, and they're really concerned about the issue, First General, his name is William Crozer. He's the Special Assistant to the President of the United States and the Deputy Director of the White House Office of Internal Affairs. I've been working with Britt Carter, she's the Assistant Deputy Associate Administrator for the Intergovernmental Relations. Been working with Jordan Pick, he's a Special Advisor to the Internal Affairs. And I've been working with Eric Magnin, which he's an enforcement and compliance officer, and I've been working with Grant, which is also an enforcement and compliance officer, and those two officers are out of San Francisco. They take care of what they call District Nine, which is like Hawaii, Alaska, Washington, all the way down to Texas, I think, so.
Stacy, I don't mean to cut you off, but what is your agenda item? Because we can't really have a full discussion about it. We need to know what your agenda item is.
Well, I was just, well, it's not an agenda item, it's just a comment. I'm trying to let everyone know that this is happening.
Okay. I thought we were at future agenda items, and you were asking if we placed something on the agenda.
It actually is comments, city council comments and future agenda items.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I was just commenting. So, yeah, so that was that on that subject. The second thing, which could be, I would like to be a future agenda item, is Council Member Reed, last meeting spoke of the contract agreements that we have with the city and all the contractors, and I think you got all, you all have the list of this, but I've looked into all this, and almost everything is, I'll go through it just real quick. ACE's Waste Service is, I think we've done that and worked on it, but that was six of 20, that one's over. Amador County Recreational Pool is coming up on, it looks like the 5th of this year, I think we worked on that. The recycle agreement was out in '13. Coastland Engineering was done in '15. Conde Earth is canceled. The Vono Planning Group was done in '16. Eco-Urban was done in 2018. Green Lock Agreement is out. Green Ranch Lands Agreement is out. Perk is up on 6/21. Dexter Wilson is out. Prentice was up in 1/16, but I thought we updated that. Simmons Landscaping was out in 2019, and I believe the city manager's contract was up. Um, Perk is up on six twenty-one. Dexter Wilson is out. Prentice was up in one sixteen, but I thought we updated that. Uh, Simmon Landscaping was out in, in, uh, two thousand nineteen. And I believe the city manager's contract was up like a month or so ago. So that's what I've got on this, uh, list that, uh, was sent to me a while back by the city clerk. I, I think it's all accurate and up to date, but I was wondering if maybe next meeting we can put on the agenda to start putting out requests to fill some of these outdated contracts. I don't know if that's the right way to say it.
One of, okay, one of the things that is, has been pushed because of the shelter in place order, um, is our ability to do closed sessions. And one of the things that needs to be brought back right up front in our, the first time we can do a closed session is our, our contract review. Um, we have surveys that were given to us to complete for all of the contract servicers. Um, specifically those that are, uh, need, need to be reviewed for updating. Um, so yes, Stacy, that is something that we have to do sooner rather than later.
Okay, okay. That's all I wanted to help you with.
If you look in your, if you look in your email and you don't have it, the copies of the, uh, surveys that we were asked to complete, um, if you don't have it, uh, either John or Sophie or Janice can probably provide that to you.
No, I, I had them and I believe I filled them all out and sent them in. So I, it was just something I think we should bring up sooner than later if we can.
Yeah, as soon as we can do a, a closed session, that's, uh, one of the fir- first things that we have to address.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm done.
Anybody else? Okay. I will entertain a motion of adjournment.
Moved. Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye. Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. We get to see your shining faces at the next meeting.